Board?
Yes.
Committee meeting.
Okay.
Captain Ledford, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's keep them like that. All right, we're going. Ready when you are, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. Welcome to our Tuesday, April 28th, City Council meeting. I now call this meeting to order. I would like to remind all of our attendees, if they would like to speak, either during the public hearing or at public comment, that they would need to go online and register to do so at Chattanooga.gov. Click on to the City Council link and register to speak. At this time, we're gonna have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Anthony Byrd.
Thank you. Everyone's ready?
We need a flag, Mr. Vice Chair.
Working on it.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's go. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please move the agenda, sir.
Thank you, sir. We have no special presentations at this time. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So move. Approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes. It's out of order, man.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Auguste?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
What do you think? Councilwoman McConroy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
All right, that's nine yeses.
Motion to approve minutes is approved. Now we'll move into our order of business for the City Council. First on our agenda tonight is a public hearing about the annexation of 2815 Military Road. So at this time, we would like to hear from the petitioner. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, unless you want me to give you a little intro, it'll be fine.
I'll tell you what, if you would, just give us a little intro and then we'll bring up the petitioners. Mr. Vice Chair, while he's doing that, did you bring up Billy and Jane Pritchard, please?
Let me see if I can find my picture here. I will give you a... Let's see, launch. This is giving me launch zoom. That's not gonna help it. Let, let, let me give you a... Yep.
Right now.
Can you go to the right tab, Phil, now where you, where you had that?
There we go.
There you go.
Let's see if I can turn it around here.
Top right.
Yeah, let's see. I actually had one that was turned around on the front end. Here, there we go. All right. Now, this particular property was annexed into the city by ordinance number 11174 on September the 4th of 2001. It was done at the request of the petitioners at that time, who were John Wilson and Patty, Patsy H. Wilson of the city. There was a proposed plan of services that was provided in connection with that case that went in and in addition to the ordinance whenever it occurred. Apparently, the Pritchards, who are the petitioners in this case, bought that property in in 2003. And when they purchased the property, they did not know that it was annexed into the city, they say. And they would like to be able to get out of the city at this point.
Phil, what's happening to your...
I do not know.
See your microphone.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you?
Hold on one, hold on one second, Ms. Pritchard. Okay. So what we will do is have a seven-minute presentation by the Pritchards, if they so desire. We'll have our departments give a presentation and then a two-minute rebuttal if they so desire. Mr. or Mrs. Pritchard, can you hear us?
Yeah, we've got an echo, so we're trying to fix that. Hold on. Do you hear that echo?
Yeah.
Do you have two?
Yeah, we're trying to get off one. Hold on.
Yeah, get off one of them if you would.
Sorry, not wanting to let it...
Well, that's one way to do it.
Did we lose them? Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, never mind, they're coming back online, I believe.
There we go. Now can you hear us?
We can hear you. Okay.
Perfect. And the echo's gone. Great.
We will, you will have seven minutes at this time and then two minutes for rebuttal if you wish towards the end. Go ahead.
Sure. Okay, so as you, I think we know, we purchased our house in 2004, I believe, or 2003, after the annexation. We were told that we were in the city, which was fine. We were coming from Georgia. We didn't know or care. And, but we never received a tax bill and when we went to vote, we were told we were actually not in the city. So we assumed that the, the Wilsons were just incorrect, of course. And that's been however many years. In October of 2018, we went to the zoning commission down there on Market Street to say that we wanted to build a little office in our yards. You know, we have like two and a half acres and we have a business. And they told us we were in the county and that how to, you know, what steps...
The GIS tax, and the maps all show that we're in the county.
Because we're in the county. So, and told us how to, you know, what steps we needed to take as far as our septic tanks. We have no sewer. And as far as, you know, how to cut the property. And we did all that, which cost like $4,000. And then we got a denial in mid-October, which was really surprising. And we called them, like, what in the world? You know, what did we do wrong? They're like, this is the weirdest thing we've ever seen, but you are in the city. They're like, what? So that, we got on the phone, or I got on the phone with the assessor of property by then, on the 29th. And she said that she could see a note in the system dated the 18th that, that there's an ordinance that had been missed. I feel like 17 years is a long time to miss something personally, but whatever. And I have a printout from 10/25/18 from the G.I.A. showing us that we are in the county. So we started calling this city attorney's office then, that's late October. And we called and we talked to Keith Reisman finally a few times. He wasn't helpful. We left many, many messages.
I went down and sat in there twice.
Billy went down there and sat, but nobody returned our call. Finally, on 12/20, we, 2018, this is 2018, we sent a certified letter to Mr. Noblet. And he agreed to talk to us. We finally got the appointment. It wasn't until 3/14/19 that we got the appointment. This is just an interesting aside that I found out today. I spoke to Carol at your treasurer's office. And she said that on 12/26 of 18, they were notified that we were part of this city. So a few months went by even before, you know, even between, you know, between the time that the assessor's office or whoever figured it out before it went to the treasurer's office. Which makes me wonder, would anybody have even called us? Like, if we hadn't have called up the people down at the zoning commission, would anybody have even told us? Just think that's such a strange thing to not mention, but whatever. Then, we went and spoke to Phil Noblet on 3/14 and he was very nice. We had a nice meeting. And he said that we needed to look at our insurance and whether the people from the county, then Tiftonia, would come up if there was a fire, which made sense.
Because we were asking at this point to, you know, we'd rather just stay in the county.
We'd rather, yeah, like, stay where we are, because we're used to it. We've got chickens, we've got goats, you know, we're kind of used to what we're doing. And so we did that. And he also told us at that meeting that, you know, because I was like, what if y'all sue us, like, for back taxes? You know, this is crazy. He's like, no, 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 we'll never do that. So that's on 3/14. A little bit later, and this is, we got a summons for delinquents taxes for 2017. And interestingly, that was dated on March 11th, then signed by Mr. Noblet. But I'm sure he signs some millions of those and had no idea. I know we didn't do it to be ugly. Then, this is something else. This is just interesting that I got today from that nice lady at the treasure department. Because we, I was like, we never even got a bill for 2018. Now we're being sued again. And...
We still never received a bill.
And she sent a copy of a bill that she says that was sent, but I don't think we ever got it, for 2017, 2018. But it was dated 4/9. So it's dated a month after they sued us, which I think is really also very interesting. And then, so we had to get a lawyer because we couldn't get the city's attorney's office to respond again. Because of course, we were panicked. It was like, oh my God, you know, we're gonna be sued now. And we got a lawyer, which has cost some money. And I think that the 2017 lawsuit was dropped on June 17th, 2019. But if you look in, it's interesting, and Mr. Noblet will have a copy of this. If we had tried to pay 2017 or 2018 through the city online and last year, we couldn't have done it. There are like two asterisks. Now how about, you know, again, I have a copy or I can send you a link. There are just two asterisks where you would go in to pay. You know, there was no, no money. So we decided we would not continue to pay the lawyer. We would try to resolve the rest of it ourselves, since we had paid taxes for 2019. Y'all had gotten that. And we thought, well, they'll talk to us. But they didn't. And so then, we kept calling and calling and called Mr. Erskine, so somebody told us to do that. And it took forever to get anybody to respond. And so that is one thing I want to point out. Since I just, that all gave me a really bad taste in my mouth about dealing with the city. I mean, you know, you're suing us again for back taxes for something we were never billed on. And, and even by your own records, we weren't in the city until 12/26 of that year of 2018. I think it's all crazy. But also, we're just happy where we are. We have, as I said, chickens and goats. And if you look around us on our property, it's a patchwork. Can you see me? Do you want me to? I have a little drawing. Can you see or no?
Is everybody asleep?
I see you.
Vice Chair Smith, unmute.
Yeah, yeah, not currently the way it's...
Because I just wanted to show, if you look at our property and the properties around us, it's a real patchwork. You know, like, three of the properties around us are in the city and three of the properties around us are not in the city. If you did our whole neighborhood, I think it's eight, eight county, six city that are around us. And I'm not a po, you know, I don't think y'all are bad people. I don't mind being, I don't mind even really paying the taxes. But I do mind paying. I don't want to do everything that I paid
That's seven minutes, Mr. Chair.
the way I want to do my house. I don't want to do...
Ms. Pritchard, that's, that's your seven minutes. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay, but I can talk again in two minutes, right?
For two minutes, you'll have a rebuttal at the end. Okay, at this time, Mr. Attorney, do you want us to bring Ms. Foster up?
Yes. Ms. Foster will talk about the plan of services and what has and what hasn't been provided. Yes.
Okay, Ms. Foster, if you'd unmute your mic, please.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, hey, let's see, I just, I will like to call several city employees up to go over the services that we've provided. And I'd like to start with Police Assistant Chief Eric Tucker, Deputy Chief Eric Tucker, I'm sorry. Are we able to pull him in?
Yep, working on it.
Okay.
Go ahead and give us a list of...
I've got them.
Okay, go ahead and pull them up, Vice Chair, while he's talking.
I was gonna just do one at a time, sir, just, but I can, Melinda, do you want them all at once?
No, one at a time is fine, because we'll just go through each of the services in order. And I'm just gonna follow along on the plan of services that's attached to the ordinance number 11174 to show that we have complied with the certain plan of services that was adopted with that ordinance. Is, is Chief Tucker there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hey, chief. And the plan of services that was adopted with this ordinance, it states that the police will be patrolling, radio-directed response to calls for assistance, crime prevention services, traffic control and accident prevention services and other police protection support. Has, has the police department done that?
Yes, ma'am, we have done that.
And can you give us some specific facts about your responses in that area?
Well, in that area, you know, Military Road is, you know, one road that goes into a dead end. And there haven't been numerous calls on that road. But in that immediate area, we have had calls for service, everything from, from accidents to check wellbeings, to obstructions in the roadway. You know, in some cases, we've answered alarm calls in the area. I know that in the last year, I think we did respond out to an obstruction in the roadway that we had to stand by.
Okay, would it, would it be correct to say that within, since January 1st of 2016, that your department has responded to 93 calls within a quarter-mile radius of 2815 Military Road?
Yes, ma'am, that would, that would be correct.
And that's, that's the kind of statistics that your, your department typically keeps, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And is, are the services you provide typical of what you would provide anywhere else in the city of Chattanooga?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Melinda, before, hold on, before Chief goes, Chief, do you know specifically, have you responded to 2815 Military Road?
I do not believe we have to that specific address, no.
Okay.
And is that just because you haven't had a call to that address?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I call Blythe Bailey, please?
Hi, Blythe. Hey, Blythe. Okay, you're familiar with the, the plan of services with respect to traffic engineering is how it's labeled in the plan of services that went along with ordinance number 11174, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it says that traffic engineering and installation signs and other traffic control devices will be installed as required throughout the annexation area where there's an established need. Has C.D.O.S. provided those services to the area around and including 2815 Military Road?
Melinda, there's a, there's a few signs in the area, street signs and a stop sign, I believe. We've not provided anything new, but we have responded to, I believe, three service requests when we did a query. None of them related specifically to that address, but they were in the area.
And is that typical of what you would provide to any other part of the city, in, in the city?
Yes.
I mean, there's no difference between the signs and the markings there as opposed to anywhere else?
No.
And if there were a need for, if it was determined there was a need for additional signage or other traffic engineering devices, you would provide those in this area?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that, that's all I have for Mr. Bailey.
Hold on, we got one hand. Councilman Gilbert?
On that particular street, is any of them houses in the county and some of them in the city?
Mr. Bailey?
I, I've looked at the map and there are some in the county and some in the city and the applicants indicated that. I don't know if I'm the one to answer that question, but...
So, what I'm asking, really asking the question, so how do we know if our police are going to the county or to the city on that street?
We wouldn't go to the county.
But how would you know which one, how would our people know which one to go to if it's state or county, if they got a call?
Ms. Foster?
I'm not sure that Ms., Mr. Bailey would be the one. We can ask Chief Tucker or if we want to get that back. Or we're gonna have, I'm gonna call Chief Hyman also for the fire, so we could ask him as well, if you'd like.
Okay.
Councilman Gilbert, would you like Chief Tucker to come back on at some point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does the council want to do that now?
Vice, well, let's go ahead. Vice Chair, if you could be bringing Chief Tucker back at some point, we'll, we'll go on. Well, he's, he's coming now. Chief Tucker, if you could unmute your mic. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
We have a question from Councilman Gilbert.
Yes, sir.
Did you hear it?
Councilman Gilbert, restate your question, please.
On the houses, on that same street, you have county and city residents.
Yes, sir.
How would our police automatically know who's sitting in county on that street?
We would rely on, in a lot of cases, it would be up to 911. They, it should feed into the 911 system. We rely on that a lot. And if there's a question, we'll sometimes seek clarification on it. But usually, it's, it would come from there. As determining, you know, this house is in the city, this house is in the county.
And depending on where it is, would they...
Mr. Chair, point of order. Mr. Chair, point of order. Is this going into the seven minutes, this questioning and answer?
I, I think under the departments, we, I wasn't gonna give them a time because they were trying to present their, their case.
Thank you.
This just be for public comment and the petitioners. Thank you.
May I ask just a clarification to Chief Tucker, or is that, is that appropriate?
Go, go ahead, ask your question.
Chief Tucker, so when, when you said you rely on 911, would it depend, would they route it to either the sheriff's department or the police department, depending on what the address of the call is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Do you all have any?
Any further questions? Councilman Gilbert?
No, I was, I'm waiting for our chief to come up.
Okay. Are you ready for the Chief Hyman?
Yes, Chief Hyman, please.
Chief, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, Chief Hyman, this is Melinda Foster. Under the plan of services that is, was adopted along with ordinance number 11174, it provides for fire services to be provided by your department, including fire protection, equipment of the fire fighting force, services to the fire, the city's fire prevention bureau, and adequate hydrants in that area. And I, has the city complied with those requirements from this plan of services?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is, is, is there any other fire department in that area that would respond, or is it the Chattanooga Fire Department?
Currently, it's the Chattanooga Fire Department. There is mutual aid service through the tri-state mutual aid system. Lookout Mountain Fire would be the next fire department in.
And who would be the first to respond, in terms of the timing? Who could get there first, generally?
Chattanooga Fire Department would be first to respond to that address.
Okay. And have y'all had calls in that area in the past several years since this annexation?
Yes, ma'am. I only have one incident specific to 2815 Military Road. Back on November 10th of 2013, we responded to smoke in the area and found that they had a burn permit.
Okay, and so that was at 2815 Military Road?
Yes, ma'am.
What about any other addresses near, in that area? Have you responded there?
We've had three other incidences in that area on Military Road, two EMS calls and one vehicle fire dating all the way back to 2004.
Okay, and the, and a couple of those emergency calls were, or at least one of them, and one of the fires was at 2816 Military Road, correct?
I'm clear on 2816 Military.
I'm sorry?
I'm not clear on 2816.
Okay, but it would have been within close proximity, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And if, and if there were any calls that were to come in at 2815, you would respond to those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And is there a way of, of knowing that whether it would be a county property or a city property that would you, that you would respond to? Would that, would that make any difference? Because there are some, we had some testimony that there are some county properties there and some city properties.
And we would do the same as the police department. We would rely on 911 dispatch to give us that information on the front end. However, we would, if that information couldn't be verified on the front end through Hamilton County 911 dispatch, we would respond accordingly anyway and then just err on the side of safety.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have of Chief Hyman. Any other questions for him?
Councilman Gilbert, is that hand from previous or you?
Well, well, since you asked me, Chief?
Yes.
I know we got the agreement now for the doors county or state that we respond, correct?
Yes, sir.
But in 2004, somebody housed that you called out, that addresses, is any of them, is any of them houses county?
No, they would not be county. The ones that we have on file that we responded to would have been within the city limits.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then, that's all I have for Chief Hyman. So I'd like to call Ricky Colston next, please. And Ricky Colston is the Director of Citywide Services. Mr. Colston, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I wanted to talk to you about a couple of aspects that are in the plan of services for this area at 2815 Military Road. One is refuse collection, where it says that this, that the city will provide refuse collection in this area. And the other is about road and street construction and repairs.
Yes, ma'am.
So first of all, let's start with refuse collection. Has the city been providing garbage services in, to 2815 Military Road?
Yes, ma'am, that's every Friday, they provide garbage service. And then they provide recycle service every other Monday.
And has this been going on for a number of years?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and, and that's typical of the service that would be provided elsewhere in the city?
Yes, ma'am, along with any brush pickups or backyard waste.
Okay, and, let's see. Along with that, have you provided, have there been calls to 311 for various services, such as brush collection or any other service requests?
Yes, ma'am, we have records that there's been several trees removed from this address, or the 2800 block is how it's been listed. We've also had tree pruning work orders in the 2800 block that's been taken care of. Also, there's been a, a top and a flat top catch basin installed at Military Road and Shingle Road, where there was a sinkhole forming. And there's been five 311 calls about following tree branches on Military Road. And we've also had one 311 complaint that's been resolved with potholes.
Okay, and, and was there, I know you mentioned several orders for tree removal. Was there one in particular at this address back in October of 2008?
Well, it just references 2800 block.
Okay, and then I believe that there was a dead animal pickup in that area as well. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. The City, Public Works, Citywide Services is, that's their responsibility. If a dead animal call is called in to respond to that, but there was a call on Military Road at this address.
Okay. Has Public Works been providing the same type of services to this area that it would to anywhere else in the city of Chattanooga?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I have for Mr. Colston.
All right.
Okay, then if there's nothing more for him from y'all, then we'll go to John Bridger, please. Hey, John, are you?
Hey. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay, the plan of services for this property states that planning and zoning jurisdiction of the city will extend to this area and that the city will, will be providing services through the regional planning agency to this area after the annexation. Has, has RPA been doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate on some of the things that RPA has done with respect to this, this property or nearby properties?
Sure, immediately following annexation, we do a, there's a temporary zoning designation, which gets, we review and apply that as a permanent zoning designation, which are two separate cases that we process for this particular property and other properties that were included in the annexation when it occurred. The other thing that, there was also, as I recall, one other zoning request nearby. So typically, what we do is we'll process rezonary requests. If there's any subdivision plat activity, although we did not document any in this immediate area, we would provide those services as well and reviewing any... we would provide those services as well in reviewing any proposed subdivisions, as well as assistance to Land Development Office if they're doing any enforcement activity, trying to understand the zoning code requirements. So that would be the extent of our, as far as immediate work over the past couple of years.
Okay, and so just to make sure I understand, with this property, 2815, y'all were involved in rezoning it, I believe, to a permanent R1 zoning, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then another nearby property that is immediately budding the property there, it's actually at 911 Cravens Terrace, are you familiar with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And you did another permanent rezoning there?
Yes, ma'am, yes, we did.
Okay, and then, and then another case was involving a property in the South scenic highway approximately 700 feet from this 2815 Military Road, where there was another rezoning, is that the blanket sort of rezoning that you referred to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so several within this area.
Yes.
And I don't know if you have a map in front of you related to this, or if you've seen one, but can you elaborate anymore on the properties that are within the county and within the city in this area?
I would just say that there is a mix. Like you say, I think Phil indicated, I think, early in the opening, that there are some unincorporated county properties and city properties in this area. But we are able to differentiate that through the Hamilton County GIS system, which has a map that defines the city municipal corporate limits and the unincorporated areas of the county.
Okay, and are the, most of the properties in this general area in the city as opposed to the county?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I have from Mr. Bridger.
Ms. Foster, how many, how many more have you got?
We have two more, two more, we'll try to wrap it up quickly.
Counsel, you good? Let's go.
Okay, the next person is Jeff Rose. Hi, Jeff.
Hi.
We're going to just ask you a few questions about the, about the sewer services provided out there. The Plan of Services states that that the Moccasin Bend wastewater treatment plant is adequately sized to treat flow from the Chattanooga service area, including this area that's annexed, but that the, any decision to provide sewers is based on if its sewer services are sufficient to cost effectively extend sewers to the annexed property at the discretion of the mayor and city council. Have you looked into the need for sewers in this area?
We haven't really received any requests for that area, so we haven't looked into it, no.
Okay, has there been any, you said no requests, so no immediate need for the sewer services to be provided there, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and if there have been requests, I just don't know about them, possibly, that's possible.
Okay, that, there is, is the city in compliance with the Plan of Services by not having sewers there when the Plan of Services clearly states that it's up to the discretion of the mayor and the city council?
I would assume we are in compliance, if that's what it states, that it's up to us to decide whether it's economically feasible to install it, yes.
Okay, that's all I have with Mr. Rose. I just wanted for that to show that the city does not have to provide sewer services there. We don't have them, and we don't have an obligation to do that. Any questions of him? Otherwise, I'll call my final witness, which is Mr. Richard Bealan.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Rose.
Okay. Vice Chair, can you bring Mr. Rose back up?
One moment.
Mr. Rose, can you hear us?
I can.
Got a question from Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rose, is sewer a practical or even feasible to run to this address?
No, it's really not, we wouldn't, you know, we haven't even evaluated that because it's so far away from our existing sewer, it's not feasible to install it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chairman, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Foster?
Okay, Richard Bealan, okay, Richard?
Hi.
Hi, okay, the Plan of Services for this property provides that the city will provide inspection and code enforcement services to this area. So kind of two different areas. We're looking at inspection services such as building, electrical plumbing, that type of thing, as well as property maintenance and code enforcement services. Is that something that your department would be providing to this area?
Yes, we would, for permitting or inspections related to building, electrical plumbing, gas, or housing, any and all the permits or inspections required for this address and this area would have been performed by the city's Land Development Office.
Okay, and then if there were any kind of code enforcement issues, such as property not being maintained, or illegal dumping, those type of things, would your department respond to those as well?
It would, so our District 7 Code Enforcement Inspector would have been working this area since it was annexed.
Okay, and have there been any calls to your knowledge for those services here?
No, not to that address, no.
Okay, so there hasn't been, but you would provide it if needed?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, you got anything to add?
There's a hand up, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Byrd.
Thank you, Chair. Are there any of the, what she was mentioning, the patchwork of city and county homes? The homes that are declared the city homes, are there any sewer lines running to any of those homes?
We can get Mr. Rose on, but I would submit that no, there are not on the side of the mountain, no, sir.
There are none to any other city, the ones that are in the city, there are none to those homes, correct?
Not on this area of Military Road.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Byrds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Phil, in your opinion, have all of our requirements been met? The legal requirements relative to Plan of Service?
Yes, ma'am, I believe we've met the provisions of the Plan of Services. That was the reason that each of the departments was requested to speak tonight in showing what we have done on our de-annexation checklist.
Sure, I get it.
That was one of the problems we had here, yes.
Okay, so my next question is, is there any, it's my understanding that when an area is annexed, we have to do a Plan of Services, we have to provide the Plan of Services within a certain amount of time, and it goes through several readings in the whole process. Is there any reason, legal reason, other than our arbitrary decision that we should de-annex?
Any decision to annex or de-annex is an ordinance requirement for this council, so it's up to y'all. That's the reason it's up for first reading next week. We wanted to make sure you had a public hearing to hear all the information by the applicant here, the Pritchards here, and then the information regarding services provided. But it's up to you as a council. The argument is that they did not have information, they were in the city or on the front end because it was not correctly provided to them. The ordinance has been in effect the whole time, I think the records in GIS were just messed up.
Okay, so if I may, Mr. Chair, let me ask again.
Yes.
Is there any legal reason relative to annexation, de-annexation, that we should de-annex them?
Not that I'm aware of, ma'am, that's the reason we wanted to have this hearing to give them an opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, at this time, and just want to verify, Vice Chair, that there are no public attendees that are registered to speak at this time, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I see a, I see a hand of some attendee, what is, can you tell me what, what that is?
I see Patrick Vaughn has his hand up, sir.
Is he registered to speak?
No.
Okay, at this time, we'll allow for the two-minute rebuttal by the Pritchards. If you'll unmute your mic, you'll have two minutes. Mr. and Ms. Pritchard, can you hear me? Mr. Chair, or Vice Chair, have we lost the Pritchards?
No.
They should be there.
So it's taken us, this ability, Pritchard, so it's taken us two years to get to this point, which to me is a long time to try to get anywhere. We have not been able to vote in the 15 years we have been there. We've been on the GIMS map as in the county, and we've always treated ourselves as the county because that's what we've been told. Mr. Bridger is wrong about the patchwork, it is a patchwork neighborhood of county and city, and it's not primarily city. We do not have a sewer, we would love to have a sewer if we were ever, ever in the city. The fire department did to come one time, and that I had a permit in hand that showed that I had called and done everything I was supposed to do. The city did not need to show up for that. If a police had, if there were ever a dead animal at the bottom of our driveway, I have never heard of that, and we would have taken care of that ourselves.
We would have certainly buried it.
The roads are some of the worst in the whole town. I wish we had for years, you know, called and had someone fix on it, but we don't. We don't do, we never relied on the city, we never asked the city to rely on us. If the police had to have made a judgment about whether to come into our neighborhood or not, to our house, they would have gone probably by the GIS map, and the GIS map would have shown us as Hamilton County.
So they would have gone.
So it's 15 years of being accustomed to this, and then one night you wake up and it's different.
And we don't have recycle because we're not in the city either. I would like recycle, I think that would be very nice, but we don't have it, we take our trash to our dumpster.
So the main point is, we've just never been represented, we've never allowed, we've been allowed to be represented, and we're accustomed to that, and that's the way we'd like to stay.
And I really don't like being sued for 2018 and 2017 taxes, when according to y'all, we weren't in the city. I mean, I think that's just ridiculous.
Okay, any, any, Councilman Gilbert, you have a question for the Pritchards?
Sir, I'm hearing the advocate saying that the GIS said they're in a county, and do we know for a fact, do our GIS, GIS say county or city?
It said county, until, it said county, I got one till October 25th in 2018. I think it was changed in November of 2018 to city then.
Once we brought it, once we went in for, to get a zoning change, not a zoning change.
No, we, and we never got a zoning change.
I missed a zoning change, that must have been somebody else.
That was not us.
So Phil, I'm going to ask the question, GIS, was that true, that it happened in 2018?
The GIS map at this point in time is correct, it is possible, I do not have a reference to the one.
We've got proof of that.
I can send you all that.
And the Hamilton County, the building commissioners all know because the ones who told us to do things by the county.
I do know that the Assessor's Office had them down as being in the county and not in the city, and that's one reason that we have not made any attempt to gather any taxes from them before they had notification they were in the city of Chattanooga.
Okay, hold on, hold on one second, please, hold on one second. Councilman Gilbert, do you have any more questions for the Pritchards?
Well, no, I was going to ask Phil one more question.
Okay, hold on just a minute, does anybody else have a question? Councilman Ledford, is this a question for the Pritchards?
It is, sir.
Okay. Councilman Gilbert, hold on one second, let's get our questions for the Pritchards so we can cut them loose. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. and Mrs. Pritchard, did I hear you say you've never been allowed to vote in the city?
That's right. I mean, we haven't tried since we first tried a long time ago, and we were told we were not in the city.
When we first moved to the house, we went down to try to vote, and it was for the mayor, I think it was Ann. Kenzie, for Kenzie, or whatnot.
No, Ann, what's her face, yeah.
And when we went down, we were told we were not, we were not a part of the city, and we were not allowed to vote, and we said, I said, double check that, please.
Okay, that would have been Ann Coulter.
Yeah, it was Ann Coulter, that's.
So you've never had an opportunity, and we're told you're not allowed to vote in the city.
That's right, and we double checked it with the zoning people too. When I first went down about the house, I was like, I've always thought something's weird about the property.
I'm good, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Pritchard.
Sorry.
Mr. Vice Chair, if you will cut the Pritchards loose, I think the rest of our questions have to do with the attorney. Thank you, Councilman Gilbert.
Mr. Phil, can we not find out between now and next week?
Sure.
Exactly when the GIS changed?
Yes, sir.
It was county at first, and city caused, based off the testimony of our people, it was a question on GIS, and that's what they rely on for its county and city. So by next week, you can have that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for the attorney or Ms. Foster at this time? If not, we will end this public hearing and move on with our agenda. Thank you. Okay, we have no ordinances on final reading, Madam Clerk. Where'd you go, there you are. 7A, under Economic and Community Development, please.
An ordinance, the many ordinance number 13473, known as the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Operations Budget Ordinance, so as to appropriate $22,000 from the Department of Economic and Community Development to the Chattanooga Area Chamber of Commerce for Process and Small Business COVID-19 Coronavirus Bridge Grants.
Councilwoman Byrds?
We approve them.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second, do we have any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrds?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
He's on mute.
Councilman Mitchell? Councilman Ogusy?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion carries, nine yeses. Under Resolutions 8A, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a parking lease agreement with the House of Ruth Inc. in substantially the form submitted for parcels located at tax numbers 167CB015, 167CB016, and 167CB017 with assigned addresses of 4327 Oakland Avenue, 4333 Oakland Avenue, and 511 West 45th Street, for a term of four years at the rate of $1 per year, with the parking to be used by members of the Greater St. John Missionary Baptist Church, and for charitable purposes as authorized by the LSC's Board of Directors.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a second, any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Ogusy?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrds?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries, nine zero. 8B, please.
Resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Economic and Community Development to renew an agreement with the Chattanooga Area Regional Council of Governments for the administration of the Small Business Loan Fund Program.
Councilman Gilbert?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a proper second, any questions from the council? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrds?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ogusy?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion's approved, nine zero. Okay, 8C, please.
A resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Economic and Community Development to enter into an agreement with Design Workshop for the Development of a Citywide Parks and Greenways Master Plan in the amount of $220,000.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. We all heard at our agenda session how Jermaine mentioned, and I guess at the end of our council meeting, we'll get presented with the information on what, who received the grants in, about our districts or so. But 134 people weren't awarded a part of a grant for various reasons. Don't know if they ran out of money, or here it is, we have additional funds. I'd like to see if we can reprogram those funds instead of coming up with a master plan for parks. I think right now, that, to me, we've two years in waiting on it, and we already know the areas that need parks. We're just wasting money trying to create another master plan, we already know where parks are needed. And I think that this money could be better used in another area.
Okay, is, are you, are you making a motion?
Yes, I make the motion to reprogram it to be.
Well, we can't make a motion to reprogram, we can make a motion to approve or deny or defer.
Okay, I deny it.
So your motion on the floor is to deny?
Yes.
Councilman Burr, I see your hand up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. I, I agree with Councilwoman Coonrod. Right now with this year that we're at, I don't think we should be spending $220,000 on a master plan. I think that's, this is something maybe we can revisit next year or later on to just see the, the scope and the, the direction that our city will be going into. So I just think right now that's a, that's something that's not a necessary need at this point that we can work on later or another year. So I second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny with a proper second. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is following along the lines of Councilwoman Coonrod, and she asked this question last week, if not the week before as well, and bringing this to the attention. And then again, today, talking about additional businesses that are suffering that, that we didn't have funds to, to also assist. I would like to know from the administration, knowing that we won't necessarily, or we could try to make a budget amendment and, and change the allocation, but we can't actually spend the money. So I would like to know if this item was to be either denied or tabled for an extended period of time, would these funds become available to use for the purpose that Councilwoman Coonrod had suggested? Mr. Chair, I'd like someone from the administration to address that point before we vote on this either way.
Okay, if someone would, from the administration would give me a hand so I would know maybe who wants to address this. Mara or, or. Mara doesn't have her hand up. You want to just go ahead and bring her in?
I can, sir.
Ms. Sullivan, we're putting you on the hot seat.
Thanks. Yeah. Um, thank you. We don't have, I don't have the ability to raise my hand, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Sorry, I was raising it.
I'll fix that.
But y'all couldn't see it.
Vice Chair, can you?
Yeah, I'm gonna re, I'm gonna reset that list. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So I appreciate it. You know, this is a really important project that we've been working on for a long time and having a master plan so that we can do equitable planning for all of our parks and all of our communities is incredibly important to us and I, I strongly urge that we continue on with this project. Now, whether or not we would repurpose, I know your exact question was whether or not we would repurpose this money and I just, I just don't have a good answer for you yet. I'm, I'm sorry. I just, it is a hot seat, as you said, Mr. Chair, and I just don't have a good answer for you on that yet. I'll have to, I will have to look at other funds and look at what we can do. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Coonrod, I know that you, that's not the, the answer that you wanted. I apologize, but I just, I just don't have an answer for you immediately, honestly.
Okay. Councilman Smith, do you have anything else for Ms. Sullivan?
No, I'm good, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, at this time I'll go to Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mara, are the funds that you're using for the grants and loans, are they from a special fund that's different from the Parks Planning Fund?
Yes, ma'am, they are. They're, they are funds from economic development, from projects that were already affiliated with, with community programming.
Okay, and, and, and thank you. I, I know that. So can they be differentiated from the funds for the parks or is that just general operations?
Um, they are.
Let me just get it a different way. The, the money for the park plan, where's that coming from?
It is in the operations budget as the other funds were as well. They are, but they are not, they're not different in that way, but they were, their intent with what we gave to the council as to what our intent was to do with those funds is different. These parks dollars, we asked you for these dollars so that we could have a better planning process, create, to create better parks and public spaces throughout our communities to draw public investment into our neighborhoods and to create economic development benefit throughout all of our neighborhoods, which is just as important now, if not more than, and that supports local businesses as well if we, if we create better spaces in our neighborhood.
So I guess, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, so I guess where you're coming from is this is money we allocated in the budget for this year. It's already been allocated. It hadn't been moved from any place else.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And to answer Councilman Smith's question, actually, we could do a budget amendment. I'm not saying that, that we would or you would ask us to, but theoretically, we could do a budget amendment and move that money over to economic development? I'm trying to figure out how these various dollars are siloed. I believe we can. Is that true?
Yes, ma'am. I believe you can as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Mitchell, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe, maybe it's already been answered, but I'm a little bit surprised at the answer. Mara, are you telling me that these funds are not capital funds to do a plan for parks and greenways?
Um, I thought that it was an operating, but let me double check. Ah, sorry. Scratch everything I just said. That's, they are capital funds. Thank you, Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's what I thought, Mr. Chair.
Never mind. We cannot do any of, any of that. We cannot use these dollars in that way. They're capital funds. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I apologize.
Councilman Mitchell, you good?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ledford?
That's exactly where I was going. Thank you to my colleagues.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Coonrod, you still have your hand up? Is that a, you never lowered it or you got another question?
Yeah, I got another question. Okay, so would it been a part of the capital budget? Because first she said operations. So you're saying we're not able to utilize the funds in a different way, but it can go towards capital projects, right? Or no?
Yes, ma'am. It goes towards capital projects. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I mean, I just, I, I, I get what y'all are trying to do, Mara, I really do. And I love how we always throw that word equity around, equity for every community when it comes to certain things. And yet, we have a lot of districts that's just not even in the equation, no matter how much I'll try to stress it and say we're really working towards it. I've been hearing that for three years and District Nine still keep being missed in, in a lot of these areas. We've been needing parks and we still nothing. And I don't think that this master plan is gonna produce a park anytime soon. And I feel like what's going on with our economy now that those dollars could be used differently and not with a master plan. Like we're still, the skate park study, I asked for information on that, nothing. We spent money on that and nothing ever come up with it. I mean, we had dollars appropriated for the Lincoln Park Park, nothing. So these monies are just sitting in our budget and right now we're in a crisis and we're talking about $220,000 for a master plan. Our roads need to be paved. We need street, it's a lot of stuff that could help our communities and we're not being equitable about it for every community. That's just a known fact. But I do thank you for what you're trying to do, but I still think, um, I'm, I'm still moving to deny. Either we could table it and bring it back at a later date, but right now I think the funds should be used in, in a different way.
Councilman Burr, uh, you have, you have a question or is that from before?
I think that's just the same. I guess the same point, Chair, is that, you know, even, I know we said we're not gonna furlough and that's not gonna happen. I just will be, I just still not comfortable with it and I will be very disappointed that if I did agree to pass this and then six months from now, I start hearing that because something has happened, we have to do furloughs or something has to happen and we're not using our dollars correctly. I, I, I have an issue with it, so I'm still at the deny point.
Okay. Councilman Gilbert?
Yes, all this $20,000, this is capital that could go towards the Ed Johnson Memorial, could it not?
Mara, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, sir.
Did you hear?
I did. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if I was still, it didn't seem like I was still in, in the meeting. I apologize.
You're still relevant.
Yeah. Thanks. So, um, could it be used for a project like the Ed Johnson Memorial? It's a capital project, so theoretically, yes, of course, it could be. We don't have an additional dollar asked for that. Again, these funds couldn't be used for salaries though, of course, as Councilman Burr just talked about, they wouldn't do anything to offset salaries, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure what the relevance is to the Ed Johnson project. I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilman Gilbert, any follow-up?
No. Yes, of course, it could go towards Ed Johnson.
Okay. Councilman Oglesby, I see your hand.
Yeah, Mara, have, have we already dispersed some money for the Ed Johnson's project? And if so, how much? It seems like I remember us approving money's going towards that project.
Um, we, I could get that whole budget for you. Absolutely, I can, I can get that pulled for you and, or there may be someone on, on the call right now that could give it to us. Justin Simon, our capital planner, may know that off the top of his head, but I'll, we can ask.
Okay. Councilman, is, does that have to do with the approval or denial of the Parks and Greenways?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Chairman? Chair?
I don't know. Right, who, who is that? Councilman Burr?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sullivan, at the end of her, at the end of her talk, she said that it couldn't go towards salaries. And I heard Chairman, Vice Chair Ken Smith, where he was alluding to that we have no direction over the money in that sense to say, you know, how we can appropriate things of that nature or something like that. So let me ask, so in a, in a crisis situation, is it in our charter or is it against protocol or something like if we were starting to lay off hundreds of people or we was in this situation and it got worse? And I'm just asking some of my senior council members, the administration or no one, we couldn't receive, remove dollars from our capital budget to save jobs or to help lives? If that money is in capital, it has to stay there no matter what, even though, not saying we can do it, administration or no one can touch capital dollars to reappropriate to help anyone? Is that what I'm hearing?
Ms. Sullivan, you want to answer that question for Councilman Burr?
Glad to and just, you know, and it's, there are good accounting principles behind it. There are limits to the dollars. They may be involved in bonds. There are, it depends exactly on which dollars and Daisy could give you an even more direct answer than I'm giving you, the more precise answer than I'm giving you, but it's capital dollars and operating dollars cannot mix. And I can, I can have her give you a, a more studious answer than that.
Yeah, that's okay, Sullivan. I totally definitely understand that they can't mix, but you know, just we in a different time than we were when that process was created and that checks and balances were put in place. I just think, you know, desperate times turn for desperate, desperate measures sometime and it's our heroes and, you know, people are made during these times, you know, to, to make those life-changing decisions. So I understand. Thank you.
Councilman, Justin Steinman has, has his hand up. Do you care to hear from him or?
Please.
Good. Vice Chair, would you bring Mr. Steinman on, please?
He said he's good.
Mr. Steinman, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
I was also just gonna add that in regard to funding sources for this coming fiscal budget, we really are doing our best to, to off, to keep operating funds available for the operating budget. You know, I think that this year, the capital budget has something like 15 different funding sources, not counting external funds, but we're looking to leverage state and federal funds wherever we can to keep those recurring funds in operations budget so that we can help preserve jobs and other things. So we're definitely working on that when we think about what funding sources are allocated to what within capital.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up? Councilman Burr, you good?
Oh, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Mitchell, is that a reoccurring hand?
That's a reoccurring hand, Mr. Chair, but I, now I've seen Mr. Gilbert's hand come up and what I was going to do is ask the council if they would please allow me to ask you to call the question.
Councilman Gilbert, you good?
I just got a quick question for Phil. Phil, legally, Council Burr asked certain questions and Councilwoman Coonrod, legally, is it against the law for us to take? I know it might be good practice, but is it against the law for us to take capital and, and operational and put it in one, one to the other?
That, that is the problem that you have because each year you establish a capital budget and you establish an operating budget. You can't mix those two each year here under our state law and have the auditors at the state and the comptroller's office not climbing the walls. That's the problem.
So each year, so this $200,000 stay in the budget capital and then as we go into the next fiscal budget, it could be switched to operational?
In the next year, based upon how you're doing things in the new year, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the question has been called. There is a motion on the floor to deny. A yes vote would be to deny this item. A no vote would be against the denial. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
No.
Councilman Oglesby?
No.
Councilman Mitchell?
No.
Councilman Ledford?
No.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
No.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's five yeses, I mean, five no's, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the floor fails for lack of a, five votes. Do I have another motion? Councilman Mitchell?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table with a proper second. Any questions on the floor, Councilwoman Coonrod? I see your hand. You have a question about motion to table?
No, I was gonna second it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call for motion to table. Madam Clerk, roll call for motion to table.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion to table carries with nine yeses. Okay, we're ready for eight D, and Madam Clerk, if you would, read from eight D all the way down to eight, eight H. Read them individually, we're gonna vote on them as a package.
All right. Item D, a resolution authorizing the Department of Economic and Community Development to accept an allocation of $938,930 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, awarded on the coronavirus aid relief and economic security act, CARES Act, and any sub allocations from the state of Tennessee that may be awarded to the city under the same program. Item E, a resolution to reprogram up to $600,000 in prior year's community development block grant CBVG funding to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic by providing rental and utility payment assistance to impacted eligible households with incomes at or below 80% AMI. Item F, a resolution requesting permission to use $250,000 of Tennessee Housing Development Agency, THDA program income to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic by providing rental and utility payment assistance to impacted eligible households with incomes at or below 120% AMI. Item G, a resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic and Community Development to accept, if awarded, approximately $160,000 in emergency solutions grant ESG funds from the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, THDA. Item H, a resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic and Community Development to amend resolution number 30061, and enter into an amended and restated agreement with Chattanooga Neighborhood Enterprise, CNE, and substantially perform attached to include an additional scope of work for the facilitation of payments of rental and utility assistance to impacted eligible households with incomes at or below 80% AMI, and at or below 120% AMI.
Okay, I see Councilman Gilbert, then Councilman Oglesby.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second, Councilman Byrd, I see your hand.
Uh, yes, I'll yield.
Very well, any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Leford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion to approve items D through H is approved, nine zero. Vice Chair, would you bring Mr. Young up while the clerk reads the next item, eight I, please?
A resolution approving short-term vacation rental application number 20STBR00039 for property located at 2411 Vine Street.
And could you also tell me, is the applicant in attendance with us? I've got a Patrick Vaughn.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Who are you looking for, sorry?
Charlie Young, and then?
I don't see him.
See Young?
Oh, got him now.
Okay.
Well, I am.
Councilwoman Coonrod, would you like a presentation by Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Young, if you'll unmute your mic, please. Can you hear us?
Ian, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Do you have a screen to share with us this evening?
I do, Vice Chair Smith, I do not have an option to share my screen on.
All right, give me just one second, let me, let me disconnect you, and I'll bring you right back. All right, see if that works for you.
You'll unmute, unmute your mic, please.
Okay, I do have that option now.
Okay. If you would, share the screen with us, and let's see your presentation.
Can you see my screen, okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, we have address 2411 Vine Street. STBR 20, STBR 00039. Property, here's an air, a view from the area, as you can see, this is right to the east of Park Ridge Hospital. Not a whole lot of density for STBRs in this area, with the, my cursor being on the one that is requested. Here's a aerial view from GIS. A view from the front of the house. And the street view facing towards Park Ridge, the other direction. We received this application on March 13th, 2020, that was the Friday before the city started working remotely. It was reviewed, the email went out to the applicant. If you'll notice, the sign did not get posted until April the 13th. We had the sign here in the office, and had sent the email and sent the letters out. Shortly after the sign was posted on the 13th, we started receiving the opposition. There's not been an inspection performed on this property, the last record of inspection we had was in 2017, when the house was built, and we issued a COV, and but we have not had a building inspector back out to the property seat. And that's all that I have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Young at this time, about the council? Okay, I see no questions. There we go. Is Mr. Vaughn on with us, Vice Chair?
Yes, sir, he was, let me find him, one moment. All right, bringing Mr. Vaughn in.
Mr. Vaughn, can you hear us?
Hey, there.
You have five, you have five minutes, sir, to present your case.
All right, as it relates to the sign being picked up on April 13th, you know, with the whole COVID-19, I wasn't sure if the, the office was open to get that and get it posted. But I, I did get that posted on the 13th, and it has been up since. So, real quick, I, I have emailed a written copy of my response to the oppositions, but I'll just go ahead and read them off to you now. And if I run out of time, you can look in, look in your email for those. So, real, real quick, three main points. I'm, I'm legally within my rights as a property owner to operate a short-term rental based on the ordinance passed by the city council. Two, I rely on the income generated by the short-term rental, and it not only benefits me, but also the city, Glenwood community, local businesses, and the families, students, nurses, tourists, et cetera, that occupy the rental. Most statements put forth by the opposition are based on false assumptions, and disagree with my experience as a host, and with the experiences of my immediate neighbors. These statements of opposition pertain more to the city council's ordinances that allow for short-term rentals in the neighborhood than to my short-term rental specifically. So my statements follow the letters of opposition paragraph by paragraph, in order to demonstrate despite the opposition, my application should be approved. But first, I want to address the opposition in general, as it relates to authenticity. A few weeks ago, my immediate neighbor approached me with news that a known Glenwood community activist was campaigning to get my application rejected. As you can see from those letters, this is a pre-written letter created by that activist. Instead of the typical opposition process where neighbors receive a letter and return it with their own personal objections, the activist campaigned throughout the neighborhood using fear and disinformation to coerce people into submitting the pre-written letter as if it were their own. As mentioned in the opposition, Glenwood is a diverse community, but the letters, however, lack that same diversity. I highlight this point because the process by which these pre-written letters were handed out and submitted are based on false assumptions, and likely only reflect the opinion of the majority. With that out of the way, I'd like to give a little backstory on how I became a short-term rental host. I purchased my home, located at 2411 Vine Street in June 2017, it's a huge investment, so I, I asked my older brother to move in with me and help cover the cost of owning the home. In November the following year, my brother became ill and needed to move back in with parents. So the sudden loss of a roommate caused me to explore the short-term rental option. I listed the guest bedroom and bathroom as an owner-occupied rental. I applied for, for an owner-occupied short-term rental license at the beginning of 2019, and had great success with it. During my time with, as a host, I've gotten to know many of the wonderful guests that stayed with me, and I want to share those experiences with you as they greatly contradict the statements put forth by the opposition. Guests come from a variety of different backgrounds for a variety of different reasons, they're great people and love our city and community. For example, beginning in May, a victim of the tornado that struck Holly Hills needs a place to stay while their home is rebuilt. I've had two students completing their rotations for orthopedic doctoral program in early. Numerous families and couples moving to the Chattanooga area need a place to stay while they find their permanent home. And there's always families who, who are staying nearby the local hospital, because one of their loved ones are in the hospital, travel nurses, people coming to town for weddings, Ironman competitors, and obviously tourists. The area zoning designation is R1, defined as low-density residential. In addition to begin, be, being in the overlay, it was approved by the city council. So I'm, I'm within my rights as a property owner to operate the short-term rental, which is, which is contrary to what the opposition states. I'm also a genuine stakeholder in the community, and routinely make updates to my property. I recently extended my driveway to the back of my house to keep guest cars off the street. Not only am I a homeowner, but I have friends who live in the neighborhood, including a girlfriend who lives two blocks over. As a homeowner and stakeholder in the community, I want the neighborhood to be as safe, clean, and friendly as possible. Whether the home is a short-term rental or not, I do not expect my home to be on the market anytime soon. So, the statement about lack of affordable housing, and fewer properties available, would not be affected by my operating this rental. This is an, this opposition is related more to a complaint to the city council, which approved this zone, than just my short-term rental specifically. My, the opposition regarding hotels as adequate lodging for visitors is based purely on false assumptions. My two-bedroom home runs for $75 a night, in comparison to two bedrooms at Holiday Inn, which would be 300 more, or more per night. Not to mention the new hotels that they referenced, which would be more like $800. I certainly can't afford to travel anywhere unless through Airbnb, not only unless they're through Airbnb.
Thank you, time has expired. Vice Chair Smith, I think you said there were some registered in opposition?
Yes, sir, there are.
Okay, if you just?
I've got, Dr. Holmes will be up first.
Okay. How, how many total?
Two.
Two, okay, okay.
Dr. Holmes, you're up.
Would you unmute your mic? Dr. Holmes, would you unmute your mic, please? Can you help her with that, Vice Chair, or is that something she has?
I don't, why don't we go to the next one, maybe she has stepped away for a moment?
Okay.
Charles Remmy, I have listed. But I do not see a Charles Remmy listed on the attendees, sir. They registered, but I don't, I don't see on the attendees list, no, sir.
Okay, if you would?
I can try Dr. Holmes again.
Let's do that, and then if she doesn't, Dr. Holmes, can you hear us, if you can, unmute your mic, please? Okay. Vice Chair, I think we're having technical, technical difficulties with Dr. Holmes, so at this time, we will proceed. Councilwoman Coonrod, if you'd unmute, please. What would, what's your pleasure?
I've got a question for Mr. Patrick.
Okay. Mr. Patrick, if you would unmute your mic, please?
I, I can unmute him.
Yeah, unmute him and see if we can communicate. Mr. Vaughn?
Hey, there.
Can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Coonrod has a question for you, sir. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick, and thank you for allowing a tornado victims to, you know, stay at your home. I appreciate our you done, and helping out. Now, is this location a owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied? Do you live at this residence?
Not currently, again, I moved this past November, and have been transitioning to, to a non-owner-occupied.
So, prior to this being approved or not, you've been operating as a short-term vacation rental illegally, right, or no?
I was hoping that you, you would be more understanding as, as, you know, as my, as my owner-occupied license came up for renewal, it would be okay for me to then apply for my, my non-owner-occupied license. You know, I apologize, I went, went by that the wrong way, but, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of hard to juggle moving out and getting a transition. If, if that makes any sense.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick, Mr. Young, is Mr. Young still on here?
He's still on.
Mr. Young, could you explain to Mr. Patrick what non-owner-occupied and owner-occupied means?
Uh, the owner-occupied is primary residence that you are currently residing in, to where you were renting the bedroom out, like your STBR certificate that you obtained in 2019 was for. The non-owner-occupied is where it is not your primary residence, and you are putting your red, your current property out for rent on one of the STBR websites to allow occupants to stay there while you are not currently on the property.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware of the distinction between the two, and
Okay, okay.
For about a year or so, I was, I was.
Mr. Vaughn, hold on just a minute. Vice Chair, would you mute Mr. Vaughn, unless Councilwoman Coonrod has a question for him?
No, I don't have any additional questions, I move to deny.
Okay. Councilwoman Byrd, I ha, I see your hand up, do you have a question, or?
Sure, but it doesn't matter, because I second Councilwoman Coonrod.
Okay, we have a motion to deny with a proper second. Do we have any questions on the floor from the council? If not, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leford?
Hold on one second. Councilman Ledford, would you bring your video up, please, so we can see, see you as you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion to deny carries with nine yeses. Madam Clerk, if you would, read eight J, please.
A resolution authorizing the Chief Human Resources Officer to exercise the option to renew a first option renewal with industrial organizational solutions, IO solutions, through May 2021, with an increased amount to include the addition of a reading exam for the master police officer, and the amount of $7,000 for a total amount not to exceed $107,120.
Councilman Gilbert?
Move to approve.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Second.
Have a motion on the floor to, to approve with a proper second. Any questions at this time? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Leford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion to approve carries nine zero. With no objection from the council, I'd like to read K and L together and vote on them as a package, do I have any opposition to that?
No, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'd read K and L, please.
Item K, a resolution authorizing a spend limit increase for the existing contract with Carisoft Technology Corporation to provide a seller software licensing and support for a total increase of $15,785,37 cents for each contract year, beginning contract year, May 24, 2019, through May 23, 2020, for a total amount of $250,000. Item L, a resolution authorizing the Chief Information Officer, CIO, to renew the city's contract with Smart Homes, DBA Smart Systems, as providers of systems, automation, and technology installation services for one additional year, beginning May 16, 2020, through May 15, 2021, for an amount not to exceed $250,000 per contract year.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a proper second, have any questions about these two items, if not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion to approve carries nine zero. With no objections, the next two items are in public works, M and N, if we could read together and vote on them as a package, Councilman Mitchell? Any objection?
No.
Madam Clerk, if you would read M and N, please.
Item M, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Red Bank, adjusting the boundaries in accordance with TCA Section 651 302, for a vacant parcel of land adjacent to Pine Breeze Row, so that it will be maintained and be included in the corporate boundaries of the city of Red Bank from the effective date of this attached interlocal agreement forward. Item N, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works to enter into a blanket agreement with Paradigm Software LLC, for implementation, licensing, and support of scanners and software for the refuse collection centers, for user ID and tracking, beginning April 22, 2020, and ending April 21, 2023, with the option for two additional one-year renewals, and an annual spending limit not to exceed $35,000, the first year reduced to a $5,000 spending limit following contract year.
Okay, Councilman Mitchell?
Move approval.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second, any questions? Any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Move to approve carries with nine yeses. Eight O and P, we could read together if there's no objections. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Item O, a resolution authorizing approval or change order number two for CDM Smith relative to contract number T one four zero three nine for professional services associated with evaluation of and design services for the rehabilitation and replacement of the Center for Gap Road Bridge for an increased amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for revised contract amount of four hundred eight thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. Item P, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Transportation to enter to an agreement with Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions, Inc. relative to contract number T twenty zero zero seven for professional services associated with the transportation asset management plan, TAMP, in the amounts of three hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred seventeen dollars with a contingency amount of twenty-eight thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars for a total amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Councilman Gilbert?
I'll let Councilwoman Byrd go first.
Okay, yeah, Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, sir. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions from the council? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Motion to approve carries with nine yeses. My apologies, Councilwoman Burris.
No problem, sir.
That was an oversight. Now, under purchases, we have no purchases for this evening, and so we'll move into other business. Mr. Attorney, we have a motion to extend the water quality assistance program. Application.
The deadline date of this, it needs to be extended from April sixth to July first. That's because the governor has had a tax relief deadline mandated by the governor's executive order number twenty-four, and we're trying to be in compliance with the time period that would allow people to apply.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? Councilman Oglesby?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Burris?
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve has been properly made with a second. Any questions? Councilwoman Coonrod?
No, I just got some for other business.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Okay, motion carries with nine yeses. At this time, we'll go into other business. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a couple of things. We never said at our agenda session, when will the ordinance, the oversight referendum be placed on the agenda?
I think it takes two council people, correct, Mr. Knoblet?
Yes, I'm going with.
To get that on the agenda. So Councilwoman, is that something that you would like to do with another council person?
Yeah, I thought we did. I thought Russell spoke up and said something.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought it was a while back. And go for it now.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
If you would get that on our agenda. The...
When do you want it on? Yes, sir.
Let's just do it per our council rules and go two weeks.
All right, sir.
Which would be, if I'm not mistaken, May the twelfth for first reading.
Thank you. And then also, Ms. Nicole, the clerk, YFD, we would no longer be having those committed, monthly committed meetings. I think they've told us about everything that's going on in YFD probably more than we probably need to know. I already know nothing new has surfaced. So you can have that removed from our calendar, and we'll, you know, just have the regular department meetings unless coaching staff needs to address the council.
All right, let me clarify. Are you talking about the meeting where you meet individually with the department, or are you talking about your... You're talking about your committee meeting?
The committee meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Gilbert, do you still have something?
Yes.
For other business?
Yeah, I want to just announce, I'll thank a group of people. I know that a lot of people has been working hours trying to renovate the disaster area for the tornado area. But I want to say that I want to thank Mercy Shelf and Venue Church. They served about thirty-eight thousand people during that time, and I just want to thank them for their hospitality and providing them meals. And the meal was a great meal. I mean, what I seen, what they prepared, it was delicious. So I just want to thank them for that, for doing it for us.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go back to Councilperson Coonrod's. Do we... Mr. Attorney, do we have two ordinances we've got to put on the agenda? One, you know, we've made some changes to the original ordinance, and then there are going to also be an ordinance about putting it on, or putting something that we haven't seen yet on the ballot?
Yes, sir. There will be two different ordinances. One, that will be a charter amendment, and one that is the revisions to the current ordinance. That's the reason there's been some confusion floating back and forth here. The ordinance that is being amended at the same time is the one that's in effect in the city code, and the charter amendment is to create that as an addition to the charter that would preserve the position of a police advisory review committee as part of your charter.
Okay, now, the charter amendment would just be in the form of a resolution where the other one would be an ordinance, or are they both?
I think both of them need to be an ordinance, and they are then placed on the agenda, and that's what we were talking about last week. That has to be done by the end of July at the latest.
Okay, so we're going to put two ordinances on the agenda, May twelfth. Is that correct?
I haven't heard about the other one yet on here, but I'll be glad to do that one as well, if you will.
Well, I mean, we got sponsors here. I'm wondering, I'm just asking, I'm not saying.
Yes, sir. And I will try not to get the cart before the horse. I'll wait on y'all.
I guess that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I want to make sure, Councilman, before we get it back on the agenda, that it is the tweaks are like we want it.
Okay, that's going to be, that's going to be for the ordinance that we are amending.
That's correct. Yes, yes.
Not the charter amendment that will put it on the ballot.
Yes, sir. And we'll try to make the charter amendment a good bit shorter just because we want to make sure we got something on the ballot that people can actually see to be able to vote on, on the ballot sheet.
Okay, and, Mr. Attorney, did you say that had to be on before the end of July, or it actually had to be passed?
Has to be passed before the end of July, I think, to be safe. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Byrd, you have some other business to share?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Phil, do we have a copy of what's going on the ballot that we had supposed to take care of when I first came into office about city and county employment?
I have spoken with Mr. Steelman multiple times. Yes, sir, he has that there. He also has a summary sheet as well.
Can I get a copy of this, of what it's going to look like?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any other business from council people? If not, I will just share what we did at our three-thirty agenda in anticipation of the governor's order expiring that allows our electronic meetings. I will be taking steps in preparation to begin holding our meetings again in council chambers by May the twelfth. And we'll be getting with the fire marshal and taking other steps to make sure that everybody is safe and protected. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. Councilwoman Burris, did we ever decide as a council what we were going to do with the funds, our council funds, if we were going to encumber them, if we were going to use it to redo our council chambers or any other public safety, security cameras they were talking about? Did we ever make those decisions, or we need to bring it back up to the table?
We made the... May I answer, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah, please do.
So we made the decision to use the funds up to seventy-something thousand dollars for security. If you remember, last week, we had some other funds, and I don't know the status of that security yet, so we got that far. We were waiting to hear about what the total bill would be or what it would take to move our clerk. We don't have that. There was thirteen thousand dollars that I announced last week that the city asked us to cut, and we did that, and it was other equipment. It was a catch-all category. I think what you really want to know, and Nicole, we don't have that yet. We need to know pretty soon what we have left totally in our funds because that's when you want to make sure you encumber them. Like, I don't know if everybody has spent their six thousand dollars. At some point, and it's pretty close to now, probably by next week, we need to know what's left, and then we can seriously talk about encumbering. That's a really good question.
Councilwoman, is that something you'd like to cover next week in strategic planning?
Well, yeah, I have it on my list to talk to Nicole about, but let me ask you right now, Nicole. Can you get, in just simple language, what we have left to spend?
Yes, I can do that.
That can be encumbered. Biggest part of our budget is personnel. So we're talking about what we have left that can be encumbered.
Yes, I can look that up for you.
Okay, yes, then, yes.
Madam Clerk, would you put that on an item for strategic planning next week, please?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Gilbert?
Yes, Chairman, by at least May the twelfth, are you going to have a brief meeting with us to explain to us how we're going to proceed entering our council and what we need to do as council for the first meeting?
How would... Excuse me, how would you like for that to look? Are we talking about on the fifth, or are we talking about actually on the twelfth?
I think if we had a one-thirty meeting, I think that'd be the perfect time to discuss if there's enough time for Nicole and whoever got to do it to give us the information of how we're going to proceed to coming in, how we're going to see it in our meetings, even our one-thirty meeting, our two o'clock meeting, or even our three o'clock meeting, where we're going to be sitting. So we have some detail before we actually have it on eighteen.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, the nineteenth, I'm sorry.
Well, I think it'd be the twelfth would be when we actually have our first meeting in council chambers. So next week at strategic planning, we can, we'll try to lay out that detail for you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Okay, Nicole, Ms. Clerk, you got that down for us?
Yes, I do.
Clerk, okay, thank you. Councilwoman Burris, did you have another item, or is your hand up from before?
I'm sorry, sir. It was up for.
Okay. All right. Any other business for the council at this time? If not, Vice Chair, do we have some people that have registered to speak?
Mr. Chair, are we going to do committee meetings?
You know what? If you want to, we will. It looks like, it looks like that has been left off of our agenda, but we can do that. I'm just going to start and go around the horn like I'm seeing everybody. Councilwoman Burris?
No reports, sir.
Councilman Oglesby?
No report.
Councilman Gilbert?
No report.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
No report.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a very brief special planning and zoning where we went over form-based code text amendments. We will have another planning and zoning meeting on Cinco de Mayo, which is next week, immediately following our agenda session.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Byrd?
No report, Chair.
Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have a public works and transportation meeting today. We'll try to have one in two weeks, which will be our first day back in the council chambers, I guess, so we'll see how that rolls.
That sounds good. Vice Chair Smith?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you make sure that committee reports gets added back to our agenda for next week?
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you. At this time, we're ready to recognize persons wishing to address the council. Vice Chair Smith, do we have anybody that has registered to do that?
No, sir, we do not.
We do not? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
So moved. See y'all next week.
All right, thank you.